That's more for the end of the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's nine o'clock. I would like to call the August 20th, 2014 city council meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present, and I would just like to remind the audience and the viewing audience that in September we return to our regular schedule. We meet the first and the third Wednesday of September, on the third and the 17th, and we also have our budget hearings on those same dates at 5:01 PM. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Father in heaven, we come before you this morning to invoke your blessings on what we do here in our capacity as members of the Pontagorda City Council. We ask your guidance and help in all that we do and say. Ask that you, the words of our mouths and hidden meditations in our hearts, be always acceptable in your sight. Furthermore, we ask that you provide guidance to those who support our work, both staff and citizens, and turn their hearts towards right-thinking and fairness towards all. All these things we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a special presentation this morning. We have plenty of good-looking guests here in the audience, and so I would like to call the winning coach, Jeff Woodard and his team forward to Recognize Jammers program.
All right.
It's the first week of school, so they still are excited to go to school, and they want to get there by 9:25, or Officer Prible may send out a call for truancy.
Everybody watch out. Joe's throwing basketballs around the room, see? Don't get hit. Pontagorda, City of Pontagorda, Chief Butch Arnell, Pontagorda Police Department. And before we get all of our coaches and our players together with city council to get a special picture, we come to you each year. Our jammer season for this summer was the biggest and best ever, and it is now over. And as you know, what we preach in our league is this isn't really about basketball. That's a secret. These hundred kids that we get during the summertime, it's about teamwork. It's about building relationships between our police employees, between our youth, between our local community members, and it's about teamwork, conflict resolution, how to play as a team, win as a team, and lose as a team. But we always have to have a champion, because it's just what all the kids work for. I want to tell you, and I want to relate this real quick to a discussion I had last night, and we've all been following what's going on at Ferguson. And, you know, we have taboo topics that we're not supposed to talk about, and you're scared to take an opinion on, because, "Ugh, that's dicey," and who... Well, the city manager and I had a talk the other day, and one of the things that he brought up to me is he said, "Butch, doesn't it appear to you that there's some kind of a disconnect in Ferguson?" Regardless of what is going on, there's a disconnect. And after we had that conversation, I said, "Well, certainly. There's no doubt about it." And I called Reverend Anderson, who's our NAACP president. And if you know Reverend Anderson, great guy, and we have a great board here. And last night I was on my way home from Orlando, and he left me a message on my phone, and he said, "Butch, thank you so much for the relationship we have." He said, you know, people, and we talked again this morning, people have this perception that the NAACP is always radical, that Al Sharpton always speaks on behalf of every chapter. And he said, "Thank you for not being scared to engage and talk about important issues," whether it be the militarization of police, or whether it be when Trayvon was here, and, you know, we had a great come-together. This is a community connection. And we pledged each other, we're going to continue talking when times are good in Pontagorda, because when times are bad, when some, God forbid, we ever have a situation where we have to deal with these issues, we already have a platform of communication and a trust. Building trust with our kids is what part of this is. And I'm just proud of this community. I hope you are. And I urge us all not to be scared, and council member Devine sat in on a lot of the stuff we did when we talked about this before. Thank you for not being scared of these issues and for being a part of community that is just so together. With that, I just want to remind you, with this Jammers program, our executive director, our coordinator is Joe King. This was his vision back in the early 2000s. Look at what it was grown to, what the Charlotte Sun calls the premier youth league in the county now. And I want to remind you that these police personnel that you see at the back of this room do this off-duty, on their own time, with no pay, with no compensation, every Saturday, one practice a week in the evenings, and I am so proud of them, because it's about these kids that we are so proud of. And I appreciate it. I want to specifically thank Jess Havia, who is our official league attorney. And he coached this year, and Jess is a great supporter of youth programs and was such an awesome coach. Rich Simpson, that is a state attorney, who, a defense attorney and a state -- well, you're not really a defense attorney as much, but, and a state attorney that worked together, and is a brotherhood, as we all do. But Rich coordinates our referees. He coached this year. But these people are part of our criminal justice system. Thank you for being the partners you are. Those refs out there, they don't call every foul. They teach these kids. They take them aside, put an arm around them, and they, believe me, they tolerate us coaches, and that's an accomplishment. So I want to thank you and our many, many sponsors, from the Chamber to, you know, Steve Fabian, who sponsored it. Thank you to all of our sponsors. Every penny goes to these kids, and there is no overhead, and it's all funded through community donations. So with that, I would love all of our awesome coaches to come up and get a picture with our championship team. All Jeff cares about is the championship, by the way.
Yay!
I'm joking. When we get this picture, if council would stand up and be part of our...
I'm standing, and he's still taller.
Why don't you go down there?
Come down.
Yeah, you're the mayor.
Come on, you two, stand up. Dave, this one, Howard, stand up. Phil in the blanks.
By the way, for everybody's benefit, there are some coaches from the fire department here as well, just not police.
Ice cream.
Sorry, Lieutenant Howard, thank you for bailing me out on Jen Molnar and our fire members, we might have forgotten. Caitlin, that were also coaches, and Jeff, Lieutenant Woodard, once we point out, orange team was undefeated.
Kids are so serious.
They're scared.
More photo ops outside.
In the air conditioning.
This young man right here, he's quite a finest young man you'll ever meet. One day, he's going to be in the NBA, and we're going to have pictures. He started.
What's the age range?
Ten to thirteen years' age.
Okay, we're now moving on to presentations, and we have a special 10-year service award.
We have a 10-year service award for Mitchell Austin, who is, God, he wears many hats. Lately, he's our bicycle and pedestrian coordinator.
Yes.
And he's our urban designer, works a lot with the design studio folks. So David, why don't you...
Little-known fact on Mitchell is, we picked him up on August 16th out at Jones Loop Road, because he could not get into the city. As we came to, we had already had two days of triage by the time he got in, and we didn't really know, what do you do with a new employee? Two days after Hurricane Desert State, he said, "Mitchell never asked. He just did." He jumped in both feet first and really took off. He's a great individual. Everybody knows him by his red pen. Excuse me, I brought a red pen. Everybody that comes in knows that Mitchell will sit down with you and take care of you. If you're a developer, come in, talk to him often. And countless times that we have counted on him for great things, and he's always delivered. So Mitchell, love you.
I've just, I've been very proud to work for this community for the past 10 years. It's really been an honor to grow as a professional and to serve such a great group of citizens, great group of elected officials, and an outstanding group of coworkers around me. We've had great leadership here, and I'm really proud of the place, not only where I work, but where I call home. So, thank you.
I'd like to add, it's been a great pleasure volunteering as a community volunteer with Mitchell. He's helped our community in numerous ways on projects that have benefited the community. So it's wonderful working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the proposed Phase II improvements for Nature Park.
Good morning. For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design, and I'm here to introduce Richard Polk, who is our PGI Green Thumbs representative. He is in charge of the crew, who meets every Friday. As you've seen the results, they've been working at the nature park, the corner of Akeistan Val Harbor for the last two years, and transformed it into a very walkable, pleasant area. Never a Friday goes by that we don't hear a car passing by, tooting its horn, waving to us, thanking us for the work that they have done. Without them, it would not look the way it does today. They've done it with the assistance of the city, and Karen, if you'll put up the... What they're going to do today is just give you a quick presentation. Now that Phase 1 is done, we are moving to the other section of Nature Park, and Howard's been after us to get it started. We wanted to come with a complete plan, but I'll let Richard explain why we're here today with the presentation. Richard Polk?
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my plea. I appreciate it, and I'll be brief. I hope you've all seen the progress that we've made at the corner of Akeistan Val Harbor. We're really proud of that. If I could give you a brief history, the Green Thumbs actually had their roots 14 years ago. We started as a group working at History Park. We currently have 21 members. Yep, some full-time, some snowbirds, but we have 21 members, active members. And we are a fully accredited 501(c)(3), so we are totally nonprofit. We do our own fundraising. We get grants and donations. As Joan mentioned, we started in January of 2012 at Nature Park. We were looking for something new to start with, and that was a blank slate. It was, if you remember, it was just grass. So we took it on as a challenge, and in talking with Joan before we started, we learned that the primary focus of Nature Park was supposed to be education. So we've tried to stay with that and improve on that and make it a interesting education experience for the community. Our eventual goal is that it's an outside classroom for grades, what is it, five through seven?
To start with.
To start with, yeah. Some of the things that we've done so far in the education idea, we've put in a couple of butterfly gardens, hummingbird garden, herbs and spices, edibles. We restored and expanded the wetlands, and we were honored with a $2,800 grant from the National Estuary Program to improve the wetlands over there, so we're pretty proud of that. I just want to mention that you don't think much of hummingbirds in Florida, but it is important. We are the migration route for hummingbirds. They winter in Mexico. They fly across the Gulf nonstop. They lose half of their body weight in the flight, and they rest on the west coast of Florida before they head north. So if we weren't providing a little, you know, food and rest for them, they'd be in trouble. So, you know, it's little pieces of the ecosystem that all work together. We started our lectures in the park series this past fall, and we've had various speakers in on Friday mornings to speak to the public. We've invited the community and garden clubs and other people that wanted to come in and learn about subjects. We had our first student classrooms this summer, or this spring. We had 25 students come through and learn, go, we had them go from station to station and learn about all what we've done in the park. I have to say, they loved it. It was supposed to be a two-hour field trip, and it ended up at a four-hour field trip. They didn't want to leave. So the teachers really loved it also. Now, Section 1, right on the corner, is pretty much done. We have a few little more, you know, things to do, some plant material. And as Joan mentioned, we're thinking about, you know, moving on to Section 2, which is on the other side of the firehouse. Again, we have a nice open area, a blank slate to work with. The vision of Section 2 that we're working with is that it would be strictly dedicated to Florida natives, and our emphasis would be on endangered species of plants and animals that are indigenous or have been eliminated from Charlotte County. There's some plants that have been eliminated, but that we might procure someplace else, but they no longer grow here. So what we're trying to do is create a little oasis and preserve what we can. We have been in contact with Edison College, and they are interested in setting up a curriculum to monitor the health of the park and the wetlands, the water quality. We've established contact with various conservancy groups to, you know, create habitats for certain plants. We wanted to put meandering pathways throughout the, throughout the park with various locations of Florida natives. And what we're proposing today is a standalone project, the mahogany trees along what looks like a sidewalk in phase whatever. We just want to get a head start, because if it takes us, we're planning that we can bring the entire plan back to the city council in January, and then it's going to be a five-year project, in my estimation. So we thought if we could get some shade trees growing along the perimeter, start now. So it's a standalone project that we can, we can do now. We're asking for permission to put in 13 mahogany trees. That would be a real addition to the streetscape of Akeistan. The trees require no pruning, no care, because they're Florida natives. They're really well-adapted to living in Charlotte County. We have set them back 25 feet from the road. We were closer to the road, and we realized that when you egress from the parking lot, the line of trees were in your way. So we moved them back so that a car can fully come up to the road and see either side and not be, not have any interference. We are seeking a grant. I will say that we haven't secured it, because we wanted to get permission first. We're seeking a grant from a store that could provide us, we're looking just for the trees as a donation from the store. We would put them in. It would be no cost to the city. We would put them in. We would maintain them, so it wouldn't be an added expense, and it wouldn't be an expense in pruning them. So if we have no further progress in Phase 2, if we, if we don't get any place, it's just a bonus. It's a free improvement for the city, and we would like to have you consider it and hopefully approve it. Do you have any questions?
So are all the walkways in place, or not?
No, no.
No, this is just a...
Right. There is no sidewalk there. The point of the sidewalk is that we connect Section 1 and Section 2 for the students when they go from one section to another, and that's, that would be further down the road. But they put it in there just for illustration. Yes?
Carolyn?
Do you have irrigation there? I mean, will...
No.
Do you need it for the trees?
And we have water now, to water things, to get them established. But the mahoganes are native. Once they're established, they will not require irrigation. And with using all natives in there, we will not require irrigation, just to get them started.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I guess this might be a question for Joan. Have you explored the idea of using the concrete, I don't know what you call it, the concrete, well, they're not pavers.
The headstones?
It's like, yeah, it's what we use in the parks that teach, where it labels those concrete.
We've already implemented that in Section 1, and it will transform over into Section 2 when we get to that point.
Shows you I haven't been through Section 1.
That's down the road.
Okay.
First, I'd like to thank you and the group for the tremendous effort you guys have put out in making our Pontagorda a little bit more beautiful.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for that.
It's not me. It's the, it's the group. They're, they're out there every Friday, and you can imagine what the Friday mornings are like. Right now, it's rugged.
I'm one of the hunters.
Yeah, thank you.
And the idea of putting shade trees is just wonderful. Every community we go to that we see shade trees, it just makes a tremendous difference in a community. And we've had a few conversations here, I have with staff, about putting more of them in any place that we can. So I think it's a great idea.
Without shade trees, it's brutal to expect people to come out and appreciate the park. They need a, you know, a little place to get out of the sun, and it makes it, it makes it interesting to walk through there. And like I say, we'll be putting in more things, and they will all be identified. We have markers that tell, you know, all about the plants and that, so.
So, so the only thing that we're approving right now is the shade trees?
To allow us to put in the shade trees. That's it. We hope to have the plan done by the end of the year. But this is standalone.
So what do we need to do?
Do we need a motion? Yes, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion, second.
We have a motion as second to approve the mahogany trees at Nature Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mitchell helps us work around problems, you know, when we were doing the sightline and everything, to make sure we didn't run into utilities. So I'll tell you, the cooperation that we get from the city is just amazing. It's a can-do group, I'll bet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to put it on your radar, Scott's Miracle Grow was at the Florida League of Cities, and we talked with them extensively, and they have grants, GRO, Grow 1000. So look into that, because they were, they were so knowledgeable, and they're trying to do community initiatives. So there, there could be a really good resource for your group to look into all of that. So Grow 1000.
Scotts did give, I think it was a $500 grant at the first community garden that was done at the South County Regional Park, so.
Good resource to look into. Okay, now the introduction of board committee member nominees. If your name is up for a board or committee for the city, and you would like to come to the podium and introduce yourselves, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, now we are moving into our public hearing agenda. We have no public hearings, but we do have some quasi-judicial public hearings, starting with CP 01-14.
Each of these, well, first of all, let me apologize for my voice. I'm a little under the weather this morning. But each of the next three items on the, each of the next three items on the agenda are quasi-judicial public hearings, which require all testimony and evidence presented under oath. Anyone who's going to be providing testimony or evidence under the next three items, please rise and be sworn by the city clerk at this time.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And when you come to the podium to speak, please state your name and indicate you have been sworn.
The first item is CP 01-14, which is the second reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Pontagorda, excuse me, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, meaning the City of Pontagorda Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to Include Newly Annexed Lands, meaning the future land use map to reflect the change in the current designations of low-density residential slash county, low-intensity industrial, and commercial slash county, C-county to highway commercial corridor slash city, HCC slash city, for 204.97 acres, being a portion of South Highlands, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 2, Page 6, Public Records of Charlotte County, Florida. Together with Sections 21 and 28, Township 41 South, Range 23 East, be more particularly described in Exhibit A, the loop area, attached here too, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Thank you. We're going to start with questions and then move into the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think Joan will advise the city council where we are in the procedure with respect to this particular ordinance.
Once we adopt today, should that be the conclusion, we move forward with the annexation 31 days after the, the state receives this ordinance. So we, there were no changes in it. We received several comments from the regulating agencies. We will incorporate those at the time of development. They were fine with it, so there were no issues. Planning Commission approved it. We submit the staff report in its entirety into the, into record, and the city staff approves it as well.
And, and as required in the statute, as it relates to Part 2 type annexations, our proposed comprehensive plan amendment was submitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity, which then disseminates that to the appropriate state agencies for comments, and then we get those comments back, which I think Jane is, which have, has been alluded to, and there have been no objections to any of the...
Correct. They were all proposed, they were all based on future development, due to the fact that there was no concept plan proposed with it.
Joan, I just had a question, because in some of the paperwork, the, the area...
171, 204.
Yes, the 204.
It had to do with the right-of-way issues, I believe, was the, yeah, it was the right-of-way amounts that were included in some. The ordinance included all of the right-of-ways.
Okay, so the 204.97 is the correct?
Is the correct.
Okay. That was my only question. Any other questions? This is Nancy?
Yeah, I reviewed the highway commercial. I think it's a lot of room for all kinds of things. I wondered about such an operation like UTE that's at the corner of Taylor Road and Jones Loop Road. It's a light industrial kind of a software engineering kind of company. Are those kinds of opportunities, is that fit within the highway commercial?
Yes, we'll be able to incorporate those. We left it very flexible, because we did not know what was going to be coming down in the future. We didn't want to tie them into any restrictions.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you.
This is, you have comments? No?
No.
Before the public hearing? Nope. This is a public hearing. If you'd like to speak on CP 01-14, you may come to the podium, state your name, and that you've been sworn. This is a public hearing, CP 01-14. Last call, CP 01-14. Last call, CP 01-14.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve CP 01-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have Z 01-14.
You know, I'm, I'm looking at the, um, the, um, effective date provision in this, in this rezoning, and, um, it does say it's, it's to become effective immediately upon its adoption. And quite frankly, um, because the comprehensive plan ordinance would take effect 31 days after adoption, I think the rezoning ordinance should, um, be effective upon the, uh, the effective date of the comprehensive plan ordinance. Joan, do you have a, would you agree with that? Okay, in which case, um, I'm going to go ahead and, and read, read the, um, this ordinance by title only. It is a second reading, but would suggest that the, uh, paragraph Roman numeral five be modified to reflect that it becomes, um, effective upon the adoption of the comprehensive plan ordinance, CP 01-14.
Okay.
All right, okay. So this is the second reading of an ordinance, read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of, of Punta Gorda, Florida, rezoning 2000, 204.97 acres, being a portion of South Highlands according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book Two, Page Six, Public Records of Charlotte County, Florida, together with Sections Twenty-One and Twenty-Eight, Township Forty-One South, Range Twenty-Three East, being more particularly described in Exhibit A, the Loop Area, attached here too, from its current Charlotte County zoning classification of industrial, general, agricultural, residential, single-family, five units per acre, mobile home, conventional, and commercial intensive, to City of Punta Gorda Zoning District Highway Commercial, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff before we open this public hearing?
None, thank you.
None? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on Z 01-14, please come to the podium, state your name and that you've been sworn. This is a public hearing, Z 01-14. Seeing none, this is the last call for the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearings.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing on Z 01-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
I would like to move approval of Z dash 01-14.
With?
With the modification on the-
And, and let me again, state that for the record. It's, it would, paragraph number five should read, this ordinance shall become, shall, shall be immedi-, excuse me, this ordinance shall be immediately, one more time, can't read. This ordinance shall be effective immediately upon the effective date of ordinance CP dash 01-14.
Which was the previous-
The previous ordinance.
Yes.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve Z 01-14 with the changes in paragraph five. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thirty-one days.
And now we move on to B 04-14.
Yes, this is a request by Frank and Mary Lee, property owners to-
I wanna say something, sorry. Would take a brief moment?
First of all, I wanna thank everybody, City Council and staff. Um, and every time, uh, and Mike, please come up here with me. Mike Davis is, uh, one of the partners at Terracap. I think it's important for you to know that, um, we have started the concept planning and the site planning. Uh, we will be participating at the upcoming ICSC, uh, event in Orlando with, uh, the City of Punta Gorda with some of these concept plans and site plans, which is actually starting, uh, coincidentally on Sunday, this Sunday. So it's quite timely. Uh, but I also wanted to say, where there's special places and there's special people, like the City of Punta Gorda, special things happen. And we will do everything in our power to make sure that the Jones Loop project is a very, very special, um, project that comes to fruition and that will have the utmost integrity, um, and bring a lot of, uh, value, both economically and socially, uh, to the City of Punta Gorda. And I wanna thank you all for being such special people and creating such a special place, which you have done here. Uh, I, I have spent a lot of time in a lot of different counties doing similar types of, of projects and, and programs over the last 20 years, and I would say that this is the most special group that we've ever worked with. And, um, so we're, we're very enthusiastic about the future, um, of the Jones Loop project and area and, uh, and the city in general, um, and the county, Charlotte County. Um, Mike, if you wanted to add anything, please.
I don't know if I can do it as good a job as Steve has done, but thank you. It's been an absolute pleasure working with, uh, all members of the staff and, uh, council.
And, and special thanks to Alexis, who's, uh, with Waldrop Engineering, has been with us through every step of the way and worked with, you know, Howard, David, Tom, and the, and the whole group and planning. Planning is fantastic, uh, here. So, I just wanted to say you, um, it's been a real treat working with you and we'll continue to now start working closer that we have, you know, Phase One completed, which, for those of you in the audience, it's been about a two-year project to get to, to where we are. So it's a lot of time and effort and energy and creativity, uh, to, to accomplish what we did. Um, and that being said, uh, thank you and have a wonderful week.
Thank you, looking forward to it. Tom, I'd like to-
I'd like to thank you for the kind words, and I'd also like to acknowledge the expeditious, expeditious fashion that staff worked with you on making this project happen. I think you all did a wonderful job together. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you so much. Good luck, looking forward to it, yes.
Thank you very much, bye-bye.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay, now we are gonna move into V 04-14.
Yes, a request by Frank and Mary Lee, property owners, to allow an existing concrete slab and knee wall to have a new aluminum roof over with acrylic windows and door, which has a flat aluminum barrel tile roof with less than a three, um, three colon twelve pitch, which is visible from the public right-of-way instead of a minimum three-point-twelve pitch, which is not visible from the right-of-way, as required pursuant to Chapter Twenty-Six, Section Three Point Thirteen B, Punta Gorda Code, and to allow the additional enclosed roof over to have a front yard setback of 20.7 feet instead of 25 feet, as required pursuant to Chapter Twenty-Six, Section Three Point Four G Two, Punta Gorda Code. Legal description, it's Punta Gorda Isles, Section Seven, Block Sixty-four, Lot Four, address four-ten, I'm sorry, I don't have-
Mataris.
Mataris Drive, thank you.
Terry, are you gonna present?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thought you were gonna do the partial ID too. For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official, and I have been sworn. Um, staff did receive this request for a variance after a building permit had been submitted. The original request, uh, included this older survey, uh, the older survey indicated that the, uh, existing street yard setback to the garage portion of the house, um, appeared to be non-conforming as it called out at 24.93 instead of 25 feet. Uh, the application came in Friday afternoon, April eighteenth, um, for the, uh, structure. Um, Lisa, uh, and I, Urban Design, did receive the application and reviewed it and entered a rejection into the system on Monday, April twenty-first, at 3:31 PM, and she also called the contractor advising, that it would be a problem because the, showing the garage at 24.93 and obviously the knee wall extended closer to the roof than the garage, and so we knew that was not going to work for him at that time. Um, after that, we did receive an updated survey, which this surveyor re-surveyed and determined that that was a 25-foot setback to that side of the garage. Uh, however, the setback to the, uh, existing knee wall was 20.7 feet. Based on that, um, that came in on May ninth, um, on, um, May twelfth, May ninth was a Friday, and on May twelfth, which was a Monday, Lisa received the revised roof material submittal where they changed it from just a flat pan roof to an aluminum, uh, simulated tile-type roof so that it would come a little closer, meeting the intent of the code. Um, but, uh, it was still rejected because we had the setback issue where, uh, it was required to be at 25 feet. Um, I would like to enter the staff report into, uh, the record by reference. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Lee did come in, they did meet, uh, with, um, Lisa Hannan, uh, discussed the project. Uh, she explained the variance process to them and they did opt to move forward with the variance. As part of a variance process, um, staff does go to the site to, um, check the conditions. Uh, so the existing conditions of the site show that the structure had, the construction had been commenced, uh, screens aren't installed, windows aren't installed, um, the deprecate portion of the roof hasn't been installed. But, uh, it did have that much of it, uh, done at that time. So, um, at this point, you know, the, the Lees had mentioned on their application that their house faces west. However, every house on Mataris Drive and all of the other subsequent streets also face west as well as Bow Harbor, so that staff could not find that to be a hardship. The original- Let me weigh in on this, see if I can get it there. That picture was taken of the house in 1970, which shows the construction with the knee wall, uh, that just had the patio that existed at that time of the original construction.
So Terry, was the permit approved, the construction permit?
Permit is still in rejection, no.
So it never was approved?
Never was approved.
Okay. Um, questions for Terry? None? Okay.
No.
Um, this is a public hearing, so if you would like to speak on V 04-14, please come to the podium, state your name and that you have been sworn.
Yes, my name is Frank Lee, uh, my wife, Mary Lou. Um, and everything that Terry has said is true. Uh, a couple of comments I'd like to make is, uh, we weren't aware of, uh, the, the permit not being, uh, okayed. And we did, we got a call from the, the builder and, and they came out and did it. Um, and I'm only saying that because it, it seemed like the, uh, the last meeting, there was a, a lot of anger directed towards my wife and I, and we had no knowledge that, uh, anything was rejected at that point. And, uh, the builder, which is Mike, uh, even said that he, he, they did jump the gun, uh, because they had never been, they didn't think there was gonna be a problem and, uh, uh, that obviously there, there was a problem. And, uh, and he said he's never been turned down for a permit, uh, up to this point. So he didn't think that there would be any, any problems in, involved in this. Uh, but, in addition to that, uh, V is my neighbor, right here, and, uh, she can attest, uh, when we, when you saw photographs of the house, we moved there, there was, I mean, it was, it was really plain. There was not one tree on the property. And everybody that goes by, I mean, they, we get compliments all the time of, you know, how we've improved, um, our street. And, uh, and I, I, I guess I, I start thinking of the last two meetings and I said, maybe you don't have because you've been asked. And, and what I'm asking is, is, uh, is to allow the, the structure, forget the windows or doors, I don't care. Uh, I mean, we just like the shade of it and, you know, and it makes the house cooler, I mean, uh, and it, it improves it, where we get set out and not be in the hot sun. Uh, so I guess, I'm, what I'm saying is I'm asking, you know, to have it approved. Do you have anything to add?
Yes. What I'd like to comment on is that if it has to be torn down, there's gonna be quite a bit of structural damage to the soffit and fascia of our house.
All of it.
All of it, yeah, in the front.
Holes in the walls.
Holes, yeah.
It was, it's gonna create a hardship not only of the, uh, the variance, but the, even the new survey we had, so it was, we're so far out, $1,100 more than before. And then if they have to tear it down, it's gonna leave holes in the walls and it's, it is, it's gonna, in addition to that, it's gonna need, uh, everything repaired and painted. So that's, that's another, uh, what can I say, another hardship, you know, where, you know, to put up more money for something.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak on V 04-14? Please state your name and that you have been sworn.
Um, my name is Mike Leana, I have been sworn. Uh, I am the general manager for the contractor, um, and I have to apologize to the City Council and to the city. Um, we did put the structure up. I had an overzealous production manager, um, and, and like we had told the other, other boards, uh, we have never had an issue, um, like this in the past, and I think he just got overzealous, had a crew and, and put it up. Uh, I just have to ask for an apology and, and forgiveness. But it's, it is a good quality structure, um, as you can see, and I know the, uh, Lees have had very positive comments from the community around them. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. When, uh, you received information that it did not pass, um, uh, the var, not the variance, but it was, the permit was rejected, what was the response?
Well, we responded to the, I mean, we, we, we came to the city and, and, you know, tried to find out the reasons why. Uh, we, that's why we proposed the metal barrel tile roof to meet the other conditions of the, of the existing roof, uh, because, you know, that, that was a concern of it being flat, and so we, we decided to, uh, put the barrel tile roof or have it, at least proposed, to put the barrel tile roof on. The reason, you know, and I know this isn't, uh, this isn't an excuse, but what, what occurred was, actually the permit was submitted to Charlotte County in air and it was up there for three weeks, and then they called us and said, it's, it's the City of Punta Gorda. So our person who did the submittal of the permit submitted it to the wrong, uh, ju- jurisdiction. Um, and in that timeframe, which was a three, three to four week period, it was, you know, that's when the, our production manager put it up.
Thank you.
All right.
That's the difference between the county and the city.
That's amazing, it took three weeks for the county to realize that it was not their jurisdiction.
My name is Fran Campbell and I've been sworn, and I didn't come here today to talk about this issue, but I lived across from that house for 28 years and believe me, this looks much nicer.
Anybody else would like to speak on V 04-14?
I agree with Fran.
State your name and that you've been sworn, please.
Okay, V Rankin, and I've been sworn. Uh, I agree with Fran, 100%. It does improve the neighborhood. It's a great little structure. We have that under it and it is nice. And I'm sure if they put up the windows and are allowed to do the rest of it, it would further improve the looks of the neighborhood. And those people that have lived there, uh, before did nothing for many years. And then, of course, a gentleman died and then they purchased the house. And since they purchased it, there's been nothing but improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak, speak on V 04-14? Anybody else like to speak on V 04-14? Last call.
Move to close V 04-14.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing for V 04-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. So, questions for Terry? So the knee wall, the actual wall that we're seeing right there, was existing?
Yes.
And what type of material is the roof actually constructed of? Is it all aluminum?
I believe currently it's an aluminum pan roof. Uh, the contractor could probably better answer that. Um, but I believe it is aluminum pan roof right now.
It is an aluminum composite roof.
Okay.
Which is, it has aluminum on the bottom, three inches of insulation, and then a aluminum on top.
Thank you.
Okay.
Kim? Kim?
I did go out there and look at it, and it looks very nice. And even the trees seem to be taller now. I mean, I don't think that you can see it as much as that, and I think it's very well done. My question, when I spoke with Howard, was, you live in this area that has these rules. This looks much nicer than it did. There actually is a house just down the street that has a similar type of structure, smaller. I guess, you know, I would say it looks fine, but then you have these rules, and you have the rest of... I mean, the special residential neighborhood, I mean, who makes up the rules? The associations?
No.
No, we do.
We do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, it's all by ordinance and zoning and code.
Okay. I mean...
Nancy?
Is this something where if a resident had an issue like this, that they could come to the design studio and say, "We don't know what to do"? Can the city offer us ideas on how we might remedy the situation?
That opportunity to have worked with the Lees. You can tell on the survey, the survey that was submitted, that if the garage is 25 there, the front of the house sits back five feet from the face of the garage, so there was some room there that something may have been able to be done. It wouldn't have covered the entire concrete slab that is in front of the house, because that is at least nine feet. But there could have been something that was put there. Extended overhangs are allowed to encroach, you know, so hopefully, we would have been able to find something. Unfortunately, in this particular instance, we didn't have that opportunity before the actual construction had taken place.
Which it still would have required a variance at that point, though, because, I mean, it's the old... Okay, but the knee wall is not in the set... It is in the setback, right? So... But that would have just been a roof structure that you're talking about, an overhang? Wouldn't have been a...
Well, knee walls, actually, they're common. They usually were considered a non-structural decorative wall, that they were allowed as encroachments. They actually still are. And in this particular instance, if it was something that was structural, it would be similar to if there was one down at the end of the street or on the next street over that had a narrower, essentially extended roof. It was a tile roof, they had the columns. And, you know, something like that might have worked, where they could have kept all of the structural part within the required setback, and maybe had an extended eve then that would provide shade for the remaining portion of it. May not have looked as nice with this having the existing knee wall. Onings are also something that are permitted.
That was going to be my question, and a suitable oning could have been put in place. It could still be put in place.
Yeah. Carolyn?
Though I read during the discussions, there was indication that there was a permit, and because it was delayed, a delayed permit, that there is additional cost four times the amount.
That was because the work was done prior to the permit being issued.
And how much would that be?
If it's a quad fee, I'm not positive of the fee on this. If it's a $200 permit, then it would be a 400... Or 800. I don't know how much the base fee was on this one.
I mean, I'm not in favor of everybody putting a sunroom on the front of their house, especially because it covers so much area of those neighborhoods that we were just talking about. Since the knee wall was existing, I'm leaning toward... I'm okay with what's there, but I would oppose the addition of the windows and the closing in of the structure.
What about just putting screen in? Oh, you know, my house faces west, and I could have done... I have rock in the front of the house, so it gets hot out there. And our solution was we put up shutters inside the house. And so we closed the shutters, and it cools the house down, and we didn't need to have a solution like this. You know, I feel like we have right rules, and if we allow residents to do things and then come back, and, you know, we're going to have a real problem on our hands. And I just feel that we have rules in place for a reason. And I would say, in reviewing the previous committees that have reviewed this, it's just unfortunate. But we have to abide by what our code is. I mean, we have code for a reason, to keep our community looking the way it does. And so it's just... It's what I'm thinking at the moment, so.
We also have the process, though, of the variance. And so we do have an opportunity, as a council, to make decisions that are good for our community. I'm very upset that the contractor did not follow the regulations. If the contractor has been doing business in Punta Gorda, they should have known this is where they come in terms of any permits. I would not like to hold Mr. and Mrs. Lee responsible. I would agree with Rachel with regards to what it looks like right now without the windows. I think that provides the shade, that provides the breezes, that provides an opportunity, and it does look very nice. But I would think that the contractor should be responsible for the additional permit fees.
Terry, would the... Would... You were saying that the roof does not have the tiles on it? I can't tell from this photo.
It doesn't.
It doesn't, so...
Not yet.
Would staff prefer that the roof be... Continue to match the rest of the house?
Yes, the contractor had found a metal barrel tile-type material that would match the roof that is on the house. So that would bring it a little more in compliance, however, it still doesn't have the 312 pitch. It's not a flat pan roof. Then at least, that, you know, it does have, you know, the feel, the look.
The material would be the same as the roof on the house?
As the roof on the house, or it would appear the same at any rate.
Tom?
Assuming we were to grant this variance, what do we do with the rest of the houses in the area? And I'm, you know, I have a little problem with the pitch on the roof not being appropriate as well.
I mean, we have like...
Well, each of these cases are required to come before you on a case-by-case basis, based on the facts of that particular case. There are eight criteria that are to direct you in whether you grant or deny this variance, and all of the criteria, all the applicable criteria needs to be met. If you feel like that in the particular facts of this case, the criteria have been met, then you may grant the variance. If another property owner comes by and is unable to meet the eight criteria, then you're able to deny that variance request on that basis.
So on that basis, though, number four, it says this variance is in direct conflict of the intent of the Special Residential Overlay District Regulation prohibiting flat roofs, which are visible from the public right-of-way. So, I mean, the only other hardship would be financially to the homeowners because of the actions of their contractor, which is not a hardship generally shared by other properties. I mean, it's a mistake was made, so what's the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like they have, you know, that if they do tear it down, it is going to cause a lot of damage. There'll be more money put into it. We are a retirement community. Our residents don't know about construction, so they really count on their contractors to do the right thing. I mean, I understand the rules, and we have them, but I mean, I do, you know, I think a hardship was created by no fault of their own, just this whole thing is a hardship because it's gotten to this point, is how I feel about it.
Nancy?
To me, then, it would be up to the contractor to make it right and to fix it, so that it does meet code. That the contractor... If I was the resident, I would be certainly going back to the contractor in this instance. And, you know, I understand things happen, and if they have to take something down, that they'd have to repair some things. It's...
That would be... I'm sorry, that would be my position as well, Nancy. I have to agree with you on that, and I think from an aesthetic standpoint, things could be worked out between the homeowner and the builder and our building department that could make this another option aesthetically appealing. And I think the dollars should be worked out between the builder and the homeowner. I think it's their responsibility.
So Terry, in your opinion, do you think that there could be a solution that could meet code in this instance?